Good, how are you? You have a good time?
For what?
Right ahead of you.
Bill? It's gonna work.
I'll say hi to Susan, I saw Susan last week.
Hi, Doug.
He said we don't work over by apple time here because I still had one more minute. That clock looks official enough, I believe.
It is a little fast.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for the joint session between the Lincoln County Commission and the City Council of Lincoln City. We'll go for introductions first, we'll start down here.
Dick Anderson.
Judy Casper.
Susan Walkie.
Harry Thompson.
Don Williams.
Bill Hall.
Chip Ward.
Doug Hunt.
Okay, we're going to just go down the list here and we've got an hour to talk about these subjects and then if we have a little extra time, any subjects you want. Housing, Bill, you're the first up.
Okay, let me get started, I would like to pass out a one-page handout from the Economic Development Alliance of Lincoln County, originally Caroline Baumann, the Alliance's executive director, was going to join us but she couldn't tonight, but this is a quick recap of the things that the Alliance has been doing in the last year, as you recall, they convened workshops in Newport, Lincoln City, and Waldport, and have continued to follow up through city officials, I think, I believe all the city managers, and then Mr. Belmont representing the county, that this has been an ongoing topic for them. The Alliance is also holding one-on-one meetings with every large employer in the county, hoping to gauge the interest in a consortium to provide housing units that are not low-income, that they have identified in particular a dire need for rental units, small homes for folks in the middle management sector, as well as fish plant workers, seasonal workers. And on my part, I'll just mention that I spent a lot of time this year in my role, not only as a county commissioner, but president of the Association of Counties, appearing at the legislature, working on a lot of issues, and on housing issues through the Oregon Housing Alliance, and despite a pretty difficult budget picture for the state, we feel like there were some important victories, we continued the funding for emergency rent assistance and homeless shelters, at $40 million statewide, that had been slated in the initial budget to be cut in half, 80 million more in bonding for affordable housing development on top of the 60 million that was approved last year, and one of the big improvements to me in this is, in addition to apartment projects being eligible, for the first time, this is also going to be available for, for family, you know, individual home ownership starter homes, basically, they did 25 million in new tax credits for private developers who are interested in building new affordable homes, and also increased funding for foreclosure counseling statewide to 1.3 million. So, let me see, one more piece I wanted to refer to, yeah, they have also established a land acquisition program to make it easier for private entities like habitat chapters to acquire, acquire housing, or, I mean, acquire undeveloped land, or when it's available on the market, and then to hold it, even if it takes them a couple of years to put together the financing to develop a project, so, and there were some other lesser things, so, if I was to have to sum it up in a sentence, I would say some continued progress, not enough, not fast enough, but overall, I think things are continuing to move in the right direction on this.
Anybody got comments? Thank you, Bill.
You bet.
Looks like we're gonna have the Wayne and Roy show, so you both just will come up. I hope these guys are the song and dance team.
Wayne Belmont, County Council.
Roy Kenyon, Public Works Director at Lincoln County.
So, the first item-
Do you want to order a little bit, maybe?
Oh, you want to change the order?
Yes, and just maybe, because I was kind of looking at this, and actually looking at last year's meeting-
If I could just say our mics need to be a little bit closer, we don't have good ones like you guys do.
Is that better? Great, sorry. I was hoping that maybe we could bring up Ron Chandler and Lila Bradley, too, because I think part of the discussion for a lot of the issues that are down below some of the properties and things, they were all contingent on a package of things we were looking at that, with the linchpin of which was Logan Road, and it might be nice, I think that there, I know that Ron provided us with a memorandum just before the meeting here, that talks about a couple of the issues that we're trying to address on Logan Road, and when we did this last year, so the 29th property, street property, the Southwest Dune and Southwest, Southwest Fourteenth, those properties, we talked about those in the context of seeing what we can do to work this out with city staff to get those transferred, possibly with the 29th Street property with some conditions that have maintained as open space, but it was all kind of part of a, we talked about in the context, too, of Logan Road and getting a package of conveyances or transfers and accomplishing all those things, so maybe we could have that, a brief discussion about Logan Road and some of the issues we faced there to try and get that going as the first item, and then kind of update you on the others. Does that be okay?
So, if you want, you find your show.
I'm not sure how you'd like to, okay. So, let me just start by saying that we've had some discussions with the staff, especially between our public works directors, about the things that need to happen on Logan Road, and we've run into one pretty major issue, I would say, right now, and there's an issue with the culvert, that is something that I know the city's very aware of, and we're aware of, that really needs to be resolved, and we've been trying to put together a joint project and get a timetable for taking care of that particular issue, and I'm, you know, I don't know if we need to go in much detail about what that entails, but it is going to be something that requires some work on both county property and then city prop, or county, or city property, too, to accomplish that, and state parks, it's a, it's a combination of multiple agencies that will be involved in the final resolution of this matter.
Let me ask you a question, Roy, you've got an idea of what this project's going to cost, and what are we talking about for, a culvert usually isn't a huge financial, when we start talking three agencies, I assume it's a pretty big project.
Well, because the state parks owns the property between the county road, Logan Road, and the beach, and because in order to meet the fish passage requirements, the current culverts have to be removed, and the new culvert has to be put in much deeper, when we go deeper, then we get into some stream restoration and from between there and the beach, and so, that kind of, state parks has their own policies and guidelines that kind of dictate how that needs to happen, the conversations that I've had with their people, they seem to be pretty favorable, but it's a matter of making sure we meet all their requirements for that, the pipe itself really isn't a difficult project, but we still have to make, to acquire the correct permits, DSL, Corps of Engineers-
So, in my recollection of doing Watershed Council work, I didn't remember there being a salmon-bearing stream in that section, is that a salmon-bearing stream?
They, they are saying that at one time it was, and they want it restored to that.
But it isn't at present.
I don't believe that it is at this time, and the city of Lincoln City has their utilities within our right-of-way, and Lila and I have already had conversations about that, the groundwork that needs to be set, first, we need to find out what the size requirement, the width requirement was going to be on whatever structure we put in, and how then that relates to where their utilities are, now, it appears as if there may be some utilities that are a little on the deep side, and so then we're going to have to coordinate with city of Lincoln City in order to get the utilities moved to a depth that would allow us to do our install.
So, now, let me ask you, this gets to policy question, since this is not a salmon-bearing stream, and hasn't been for several years, and it's in the city, the agency that's doing this is ODFW?
That is doing which?
Saying it's a salmon-bearing stream and needs to be-
That is, that is the direction that we're getting that, is from ODFW, yes.
Okay, I have a question then, policy-wise, if they force Lincoln City to do this, then they should force the city of Portland, who's put many, many streams underground that were salmon-bearing streams, are they planning on doing the same thing to Portland that they're planning on doing to Lincoln City?
I have not an answer for that question.
I think it's a policy question that needs to be asked of ODFW.
Can I say that actually, I think the issues are greater than just the salmon-bearing, that's probably, you know, that's impacting the type of culvert that goes in there, and when and how we can do that, but the issues in terms of, some additional flooding issues in that particular area-
Right, well-
Are really generating why we need to do this anyway?
The original issue was lack of capacity.
Right.
At high peak flows, the pipes that are currently in the ground won't carry enough water, but then when you go to replace those with a new pipe, then you have to follow the current guidelines, and that's where we get into sizing, grade, and it's all, you know, and the thing is, even if it's not salmon-bearing, and maybe it's only cutthroat, we still pretty much have to follow the same guidelines, if there's a fish in there anywhere, we pretty much have to follow those guidelines, and it's not a killer, it's, it's not that it greatly increases the cost of the project, but it's just that it, it means that you have to do certain things downstream and upstream of your install to make it all work.
And I think that's where the city comes in, too, because the city has some property that's upstream.
Correct, correct, we have the Salicye Road, and then the property adjacent to it, which is the wetland area.
And the conversations that Lila and I have had is that we, we probably want to treat each, each project separately, and right now, the big thing is the lack of capacity on the current culverts that run under Logan, therefore, that'll be where we focus our attention to start with, and then we can go from there.
Questions?
So, I think there may have been some other questions around Logan Road, Ron?
There's a couple of things that Council Hinton, who was unable to be here, asked that I read for her, the first one pertained to the culverts that we were talking about, she wrote, "Logan Road culvert and water drainage pipe from the east side of road at Logan Creek to the beach, we appreciate the recent work on the wetlands, culverts, and debris catch, this is a county project, and would really appreciate it being completed to the beach." And then also, she wanted me to bring up some information on some recent signage issues that we have been working on as it affects Logan Road, she writes, "North end of Logan Road has an impact on recreational use of the hiking trail to God's Thumb, parking in no parking areas, and trespassing onto private property, especially of concern is parking in the emergency-only parking areas, the city would like to improve the signage and the street painting in the surrounding areas for parking and wayfinding, to do so, we require coordination of the county so we can move forward with this project." I put on your, the desk in front of you several pictures, the first shows the, the road and the, and the right-of-way that will take you up to the trail that takes you to, she calls it, God's Thumb, and then I also included some pictures of, of the signage that is at the end of the, of Logan Road, and then finally, some pictures of some different types of signage, the concept that we've been working on is, is the idea of really creating signage that are wayfinding signs, not just simply no parking signs, so that you really would start at the park with signage that would tell people where the trail is, where they can park, where they can't park, and also, along the way, we would be putting signage at different locations, such as the parking areas, and then finally, at the end of the road. Right now, we're a little bit in the concept, where we are just presenting some ideas, we will be coming to the county, and as much as Logan Road is the county road, to discuss those ideas as we, as we put those together a little bit more.
So, by coordination, Mr. Chair, it, it just would mean that we'd review the city's plan, and as long as it fit within our policies, we'd sign off on it to approve whatever signage they propose?
That's an option.
Okay, seems reasonable.
Right, well, and the thing is, from time to time, we have requests come in, a lot of times, it comes through Public Works of Lincoln City to, to us for sign install, and there are some things that we, we look at, we, we try not to put a sign for us along our roads because of the constant maintenance issue.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't take long directly on the beach for a sign to wear out, and so, to try to keep us from having to spend a lot of money on, on signs, I mean, you know, Logan Road is two miles of our 340 miles of road, and so, I guess what I'm saying, I'm very particular about what, what I put up and when I put it up, because it's got to fit within our scheme of things, and I know for Lincoln City, that's, that's kind of an irritation for them, because they do the things certain ways, and the county does things other ways, we technically maintain farm-to-market roads, you know, we are, we are basically based in the rural area, when we get into city environments, whereas like Logan Road, where basically the, the city has grown around our road, we still try to maintain our, our certain standards, which don't meet with the city standards, and so, we, we try to work with each other, but when it comes to sign placement, you know, we really try to keep a handle on that, and make sure that it's, it's still, is something that, either there's an agreement that city of Lincoln City will maintain that particular sign, or that it's something that we sign off on, that we will maintain from that point forward.
Okay.
I mean, because I know there was at one time some, some requests for additional speed signs.
Right.
And I was a little reluctant to put up additional speed signs, I understand that speeding on Logan Road is an issue, and always has been, especially with all the pedestrian traffic that's on there, but at the same time, I have one guy who covers basically the entire county to do signs, and so, it's, it's hard for me to give in and put in, you know, signs that are requested by the city, but I take them all into consideration.
And I assume if the city was to offer not only to install these signs, but to make a commitment to maintain them as well, that would be, go a long way, I would think toward moving this forward.
Sure would.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And my hope is that's a good interim step for what we do, which is the discussion of the transfer of Logan Road to the city, which is what we've been talking about, so, if we can accomplish that in the not-too-distant future, then the city can make all the decisions related to that, to the road, and I think that'll solve everybody's issues, and so, now I can skip down, I guess, a little too, because again, we've kind of been looking at this as a package of, of deals here, but just again, to reiterate what we talked about last year, the property on Southwest 29th, county property there, that is something that, as you may recall, was the subject of litigation of both the city and the county were in for a number of years, that has been resolved at this point, so we are prepared to include that in a package, a conveyance to the city, with, with some conditions, we talked about initially when we first discussed this, either some easements or other conditions, and make sure that that's continued as an open space or as a parked property, and I think that was the intent of the city all along, is to add that to your open space inventory. And then the other one, which is a kind of odd situation, but not unique in Lincoln County, and that was the fact that there is a public road, this is Southwest Dune, Southwest to Southwest Fourteenth, and there's actually two small pieces in there that the county acquired through foreclosure, somebody had created, you know, basically the outline of a street, and they are providing access to properties inside of Lincoln City, but they never dedicated them as public roads, and eventually, because those were separate tax laws, and nobody decided to pay the taxes, the county ended up foreclosing on those. So, this is kind of a unique one, too, in terms of what we would propose doing with this, is transferring, we want to transfer the, the actual underlying fee to this property, but, you know, we can do that, and we can talk to staff about the best way to do that, and with your city attorney, too, about, do you want us to dedicate it as a road, public road first, or do you want to take it just a fee, and then you'll dedicate it as a public road, you know, we can discuss the particulars of that, but that's also something we're willing to, to talk to you about. And if I might jump, I mean, no, I'm jumping all over the place, but since I'm up here right now, to the dissolution of the roads in districts, because I know that we wanted an update on that, the good news is that we went through the process, it's a very interesting process in Oregon for the dissolution of districts that are created, and involves the, the board initiating a process and becoming then the Board of Trustees for the district in dissolution, when there's no longer a sitting board, in the case of both sanitary district and the road district, that was the case, or, excuse me, the sanitary district and the water district, that was the case, we went through a variety of public hearings, we looked at the assets and liabilities, which in the case of the water district were nil, in the case of the sanitary district, there were some, and then dissolved the districts, and in fact, last November, sent you a check for, and I think I even brought a copy of the check, it was something like $48,000 that the city received upon dissolution of that particular district, so those processes are complete. I think I've covered the ones, I think that's all my stuff.
Yeah, I still have one thing left on here, and that's East Devils Lake Road culvert, we're referring to is the swamp on the south end of East Devils Lake Road, a couple of years ago, we addressed the issue on the east side by taking out a very short bridge and replacing it with an aluminum box culvert, and raised the road approximately three feet, which solved the flooding issue on the east end, but now we still have a flooding issue on the west end, it's not as, it's, it's not a year-round event now, fortunately, but we do have a project plan, we're going to address the issues with the bridge, and the difference between the two ends is, on the east end, the bridge that actually was there was only 18 feet long, and it's not actually federally recognized as an actual bridge, anything under 20 feet is not considered a bridge, it's not part of the national bridge inspection system, and so, it allowed us then to replace that with a culvert, now, the bridge on the west end is actually like 35 feet long, so it is a bridge, and it will always be a bridge, we cannot replace it with a culvert, and so, therefore, we have to do something with the bridge itself, the plan is, is to actually raise the bridge, I mean, we may not, we may use the existing slabs, just raise the actual caps, raise the bridge itself, and then fill in both sides to meet the grade that now exists on the east side, I think when I was up here last year, I threw out the date, like 2018, I kind of have to renege on that just a little bit, we kind of had a slim year budget-wise in our 17-18 fiscal year, we basically lost the last of our federal funding, the gift that we got from ODOT for taking one of their roads, we used that last year, and so, we're a little bit lean for this fiscal year, so, and plus, we suffered a little damage over the winter that we're still trying to pay for, so my guess is, and it's, it's a fairly good guess, that somewhere in the 19, 19, 19-20 fiscal year, we should be in there doing this project, which should then basically relieve the flooding issue for most events, I'm not going to say that we're not going to have an event that that road does go underwater for a short period of time, because it seems like the flooding events are getting a little bigger, a little, a few more per year, but anyway, it'll, it'll keep us dry 99% of the time, so I'm guessing 19, 19-20, sometime in there.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Roy a question, kind of related to this, but also more broadly, on road maintenance? Well, I think probably anybody who's followed the news out of Salem at all knows that in the final days of the legislative session, they pulled off something they had been working on for a couple of years, and a lot of people were skeptical it would ever happen, but for the first time in many years, we do have a new transportation financing package, and I've had a few people ask me, said, "Well, why do counties and cities care about that so much?" And a lot of people I find don't realize that only half of every dollar of gas tax goes to ODOT, that 30 cents of every dollar to the counties, and 20 cents to the cities, and I know the final passage, the final package was scaled back a bit, but is it too soon to ask, you know, what the impact, can you give us just maybe a very high-level look at what the impact of this infusion of money is going to do to our efforts to maintain the county system long-term, and do projects like the one you were just talking about?
Yeah, the spreadsheet that we were sent, that shows us what we should receive annually for the next 10 years, starts out at, right, about $800,000 for Lincoln County.
And that's on top of existing resources, or-
That's on top of the state gas tax that we're currently getting.
Okay.
It gets us back to where we were about three years ago, where we still were able to do minimal maintenance, we were still able to keep a minimum number of crew on, and we were able to minimally maintain our system, you know, when the federal money started drying up, you know, overall, over the last 10, 12 years, we've lost about $4 million in revenue.
Yeah, that's something I've been trying to get across to people, and I hope we can use this and other opportunities to get the word out, that we've been in a slow bleed for more than a decade, and-
Right.
And it just doesn't suddenly make us flush now, but at least hopefully, it stops the bleed and starts to reverse it, is, would you say that's a fair way to, at least stops the bleed?
I don't know that it reverses anything, to be perfectly honest.
But at least it keeps it from getting any worse.
It keeps us, it keeps us open for business, it allows us to keep a crew on, it allows us to buy certain pieces of equipment when we absolutely have to, it allows us to keep our emergency response up, but as far as large projects, there's, we're still not there yet, we're still applying for every little bit of free money we can get, every grant that comes along, we, you know, we just received a project through the flat, through the Federal Land Access Program, that's going to give us a chunk of money to pave a section of road, so we're still going to be active in trying to find these avenues to get that kind of stuff done, what the passage of the transportation bill does is allows me to keep the people I have, allows me to minimally maintain the roads that I have, and allows me to keep, in emergency situations, keep responding to them.
Thank you.
So, you mentioned that the increased revenues will generate about $800,000 for us the first-
That's the start, first two years.
Year?
Yes.
Was that a billion?
That, well, basically, I don't know why the numbers come out like they do, but it seems like every two years, they take a jump.
Okay, because I think, isn't there a graduated increase in the gas tax?
Yeah, well, we'd get $800,000 each year, but then it'll increase as the gas tax increases.
In the third year, it goes up to just over a million.
And what are we getting now from the state, so how much?
This last year, we received just a little over $3 million.
So, it's-
So, we're looking at real-
A little less than a third more.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other subjects you want to talk about?
Could I just take the opportunity to bring up one more thing, because we're starting a process, we've retained a firm, I think actually the city may have been using the same firm, Cogan, Owens, Green, for some planning issues, this firm is going to help us with the refinement of the Lincoln County Commons, or formerly the Fairgrounds, master plan refinement process, and we're going to be going through a pretty extensive public outreach program, it's the final stages of kind of pulling this thing together and deciding what we're going to do with the Commons, there will be some sessions here in Lincoln City, but we would like to make a request, that we think that the, the cities in the county are important stakeholders, and I know have been involved in some of the previous processes that we have had, you've had representatives there, if there's someone that the city would like to appoint to our, kind of our visioning committee, the master committee, that'll be doing some of this, we would love to have you select somebody and do that, we'll keep staff informed, too, about the progress and the, and work with on some of the dates here, and seek input from staff also, especially on technical kinds of issues, but if there is somebody that the mayor and council would like to appoint, we would really appreciate that.
Okay, I had one subject that I, any other subjects? I had one subject I brought up last year, there's a park in Cutler City, and it's a nice park, I went for a tour, but I got a constituent called and said it was our property, we checked, it was our property, but it's- We checked, it was our property, but it's given over to Lincoln City, and they were concerned about the maintenance. I was, I haven't gone back on a walk of that park, but do you know anything about any status of that?
Nothing.
Um, you know, we'll get complaints every now and then from neighbors that walk and say, "Oh, there's a tree down" or something, but we're on that trail quite often and maintaining it, so it's mainly a nature hike.
Yeah, some of the signage was getting pretty old in there, and like needed a little revision.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take another look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's a great park.
It is.
It's loaded with rhododendrons, and it's not very well-known, to my knowledge, by any, it's not like it's used by people from out of state, but it's well worth maintaining.
And locals use it all the time. So, you know, if there's a bee's nest, or hornet's nest, or something, you know, we get those calls, and, and we have different crews that go in and put new bark mulch down, so.
It's a nice place.
We'll take another, we'll take a closer look at it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Going down Highway eighteen from Van Duser Corridor down into Lincoln City, there's a couple of extremely blighted properties. One is like a metal recycler or something that I can't see, you know, it's kind of the front door to Lincoln City, and it really gives it a black eye. And I'm just wondering what tools that the county has to help clean up that area.
Interesting you should ask that.
I've been working, Wayne, and I've been working on this. We think we might have a potential solution. I'll let him describe.
Well, I'll separate the tools we might have from really the resources. And our biggest problem, which is I think not unusual for a lot of counties and other entities, is really having the resources to do our code enforcement actions. We have not had a code enforcement person, someone dedicated to doing that in thirty years that I've been in Lincoln County. And so it falls to people who have other jobs and other responsibilities to try and bring code enforcement kinds of activities on top of everything else they do. And, you know, it's not that it hasn't worked and we don't do some code enforcement, but obviously there's a, there's a need that far outstrips the resources we have. So the board this last year really put it back on staff to say, what, you know, what, what would we need to actually increase some of the enforcement capabilities we have? And we said we'd need some staffing. So they have directed us, and we are providing some funding to do it, to actually bring on for the first time a code enforcement person who would be a part of the civil side of our sheriff's office. You know, they, they have a lot of experience doing that, that kind of stuff, and they actually do already enforce some other ordinances we have that are more pertaining to law enforcement side. But we're looking at developing, we're working right now on a job description, kind of putting together a budget to do that, and hopefully going to be putting together a position and bringing that back to the board for final approval in the not-too-distant future. Once we have a code enforcement person, we think we'll have a lot more tools available. We do have provisions in our county code to deal with some of these issues. Some issues we don't. So we're also going to be exploring at the same time in my office, you know, what additional tools do we need to bring in terms of code revisions or additions to, to give us the additional tools we need to actually utilize this code enforcement officer. But we think in a lot of ways, you know, having a body that goes out there, can identify the issues, can work with the neighbors, and we take a positive approach on these things. It's because we find that most of the time, when you bring this to people's attention and you work through it, you get compliance, you get voluntary compliance. But we want to know what to do if you can't get voluntary compliance, and that's what we're going to be working on.
And some of these do prove to be challenging. I just want to give as an example for anybody watching. Wayne, where was that one property, North County, that everybody was dealing with? Was it like Road Log, Rose Lodge or?
I want to say Panther Creek.
Panther Creek, okay. I started getting calls about a property on Panther Creek where there were multiple squatters on the property and saying, "Why wasn't the county doing anything about this?" And I found out actually the sheriff's office, our, our sanitarium, multiple people had responded there. There had been like a couple of claims that raw sewage was flowing onto the property, but they never found any evidence of that, and that people were squatting on the property, essentially illegally moved their trailers on and were living there. But what we found out was the property was in foreclosure, and even if, and that the last, I guess, legal owner of record was letting people move onto the property and live there. But when there's no owner of record to initiate an enforcement action, the sheriff, if the people aren't breaking any laws otherwise, can't go on the property and kick squatters off a property. Once the bank finally got title to the property, things started to move. But also that, I think, kind of helped point out, we had some internal communication, but would you say, Wayne, it's fair to say that we saw that there was an example where we had multiple departments?
Yes.
Having contact on a property, and the communication wasn't quite what it needed to be, so, you know, like for instance, our, well, our own county council's office didn't know that in the previous year, I think the sheriff's office had made something like ten arrests on that property.
Ten or eleven arrests on the property.
And so that was a pretty clear indication that this was a problem property and needed to, you know, devote some extra resources to it. So we're getting there. I think it's a work in progress, but again, it's moving in the right direction. And thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for helping to push the ball on our end.
Our goal is not to become heavy-handed. This is the way it is. We have to find the right personality for a code enforcement officer. We do want to work with people to make sure that they get places cleaned up, and it's all over the county.
Yeah.
This, I think probably, there's other areas worse than yours. That one site is definitely something that we'll have to check our codes and see if we've got the right stuff. And then, let me tell you, the more I've got into this, it's not easy, because if the person doesn't want to, then you get lawyers involved, and you wind up going to court, and it's not just a matter of, we're going to fix, clean up something tomorrow. That's one of the reasons that we have to find the right person who's willing to try to get people to move in the right direction without the heavy hand of a law. But in that case, I think you've got to have some teeth behind it and be willing to go there, which can take a lot of time and money from the county, from other things we're doing, but.
It's a quality of life issue, public safety, health sometimes, so I think it's appropriate. And one of the things we talked about, you know, frankly, I think you as a city, Newport, the last few years, you stepped up your game on code enforcement, and we said, maybe that's pushed some of the problem into the rural areas, so now it's time for us to deal with it as well, and we will.
I had something to ask about. At our meeting two weeks ago, we had an ordinance before us about kind of loosening guidelines during the eclipse time. Wondering if the county has done any of that sort of thing?
No.
Okay. So you're, no camping and no renting a house?
Let me put it this way, we're, we're not going to change any of our codes specifically for this particular event.
Yeah, because actually, we are in the process of adopting a mass gathering ordinance. You know, the state only regulates events with, involving three thousand people or more, so we're going in the direction a lot of counties have done, to regulate events of below three thousand, but more than three hundred people. But that's not going to take effect until after the eclipse.
Question, doesn't the state, though, regulate the beach with twenty-five or more?
The beach, the state does regulate the beach. That's a different issue, yeah.
You know, for something like Run Twenty-One, for example, that, you know, or the Burnt Woodstock Music Festival that took place a few years ago in Burnt Woods. And the theory that the other jurisdictions looked at, and we were looking at here, you know, we don't want to hit, like, say, the big church picnic, the family reunion, the outdoor wedding, the really non-commercial gathering, but the really big gatherings, the ones that are often commercial in nature, like music festivals where, where they're selling tickets, just, again, without wanting to be heavy-handed, but realizing that these kind of large-scale events, and especially when they last for a weekend or even longer than a weekend, can have traffic, noise, health, safety impacts, and we just want to make sure the organizers have taken all of those kind of things into account.
Any other subjects you'd like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, a couple still dealing with land, if we could. The, the idea of, as you may know, we're got our hands on and talking with the school district on the Old Taft School, elementary school in the Taft area, and we're stymied by actually the school finding alternative location for its school buses. So we've talked, Roy and I have talked a couple times about the possibility of your maintenance yard in the Cutler City area of maybe being available for either swapping, buying, using, leasing. In addition to that, certainly looking for alternative places to put buses, store buses, if you have land that we might look at either swapping or cutting a deal, a three-way deal with the school district. I don't know if you have such an inventory, but we're motivated to get that property in Taft, one cleaned up because of its environmental issue, and then put to use, and we're stymied by the current use.
And you know what? I think that, we had some discussions, I know, with Mr. Belloni about the school bus issue. My recollection was when they found out it was in the tsunami zone, was that? Yeah, when it's tsunami zone, they said, "That's not going to work for them. They don't want to do that." So I don't know if that was, that's the last I had heard about, and I don't know if that's the case or not.
But I would have thought the Old Taft School Site's tsunami zone as well.
Well, no, I think, but I think they were trying to, when they move, wherever, wherever they're going to move, they're going to move it to a place that's outside the tsunami inundation area. So I think that's what I was hearing. I don't know.
That was the last word that I got when I talked to Rich, was when he found out where the property, our Cutler City shop actually existed, he kind of wrinkled his face a little bit, said, "Well, yeah, well, it's not quite what we were looking for." But, you know, we're, we're always willing to work with you guys. I don't know property-wise what we have really in the Taft area.
You know, especially that kind of size of a property, I don't think we have anything in this area.
We have quite a few pieces of property. I know we just looked at some of them for low-income housing designated.
But those are small pieces. We're not talking about a, you know, a large enough piece that would accomplish that. So.
And if I can stay with, still with land, trying to gauge your involvement, sensitivity to Lincoln City, perhaps expanding its urban growth boundary, which would, and your property, certainly your, or county property would be involved in trying to reach in more, looking ahead to a new urban aid, missing the word, Urban Renewal District Plan that, and I don't, you know, I'm always sensitive to touching other taxing districts and, you know, the whole idea of, but I don't know if the county has a thoughts on or weighing in on an expansion of a community's urban growth boundary, and, you know, does that bother you in any regard?
I don't know. We've worked with Newport on a couple of expansions of theirs, haven't we? I don't think really, I mean, our position is, you know, we, I think to the greatest extent possible, we want to help facilitate that, because, you know, this is the way in the Oregon system that cities are, it's your one opportunity to grow, and as long as, as long as you want to undertake that, and it can go through all the state hoops, we're not, we're not going to stand in the way, and in fact, would probably want to encourage it, even, even if it does slice off a little bit of revenue to us. I think frankly, the, the benefits overall, I mean, if it facilitates increased development.
Yeah, and urban growth boundary wouldn't necessarily take any revenue from us.
Yeah.
And the ones we've done most recently, we did a fairly major one with the city of Newport, in which they actually took their entire watershed into the urban growth boundary. That was an interesting process to do that, and it was amazing really how much, how many hoops you had to go through even to do that. But they, they did take, and then they annexed all, they owned most of the watershed around their reservoirs, and, you know, we supported that. But we really haven't done that many urban growth boundary amendments in the last few years, so.
And then there were some in South Beach, I think, with Wilder.
There were.
And that's the only I can think of.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll work with you.
Okay, that's what I like to hear. My last item is last night, or Monday night, county, city council directed over a hundred thousand dollars for homelessness in Lincoln City. And primarily, you know, transient, aimed at entrance. And concern is always, you know, where is the county? As part of the things that we wrestled with was, you know, it's a long ways to get to Newport for services, so we, we're being, feeling forced to implement stuff. Could you share with us, you know, are the plans that you're looking at on homelessness and trying a little broader touch of services, primarily to the north end?
I may find a split on this one, so let me give Doug a chance to talk this. It may not be a unanimous agreement.
It seldom is with us either, so.
I'm not sure what comments you're looking for.
Well, I, on homelessness, I, you've.
Well, in terms of county support, is that specific?
Well, generally speaking, I think my efforts are toward addressing the supply side. There are efforts that talk about making it easier for individuals to afford the existing rents, but all that does is increase the demand, in my opinion. So my feeling is we need to do things that, that address the supply side, and, you know, I think Commissioner Hall gave a pretty good idea of some of the things that are available, but it's also a case of limited supply of land. I was talking with the representative from the newspaper, and I said that when you talk about affordable housing west of Highway One-O-One, it's an oxymoron. You cannot build affordable housing west of Highway One-O-One. The cost of land is too great. So I think from a general standpoint, I'm certainly supportive of looking at ways to increase the supply, looking at ways, I'm comfortable in looking at ways that maybe you address some of the, the building issues, but it's a complex issue. It's supply and demand, and economics says that the demand is greater than the supply, and it should balance out.
Yeah.
It's not.
No.
So there's some fundamental issues there.
Let me make my comments, and then Bill. This is his, his ballpark, I'm playing in his ballpark, but along with what Doug said, I've tried to present a possible land use change so that we could move to the east into timberland along the coast, partly because of the tsunami problem. It's ridiculous, the land use system has failed so bad on the coast, because you're trapped between the ocean and the timberland. And now we know there's a tsunami, and we recognize it, and we're using up and forcing more and more people to move into the tsunami zone, because there's no place for them to go. So the option is to create a land use, a different type of zone. Maybe it's a one or two miles inland that could be used for land swaps to allow people to move out of tsunami zones, but it also creates more land then that could maybe take some pressure off the cost of land. But it hasn't been flushed out to the degree, I've talked to timber owners, they were interested in it, they didn't say no, but, you know, it takes, all depends on the money and where it comes from and how it comes. But the coast, it's a failure, the land use system when it comes to understanding the natural disasters and our, most cities can grow in four ways. We can grow in two.
But the reality is, too, is, I mean, affordable housing or housing in general is not only a statewide issue, I mean, it's a nationwide issue, so it's, it's very complex. The other thing I'd say is that I try not to get hung up on whether we're talking about workforce housing, affordable housing. If you increase the supply of housing, you'll increase, well, by increasing the supply of housing, you'll reduce the cost of housing. Of course, the downside of that is, if you increase it enough, we'll all see a devaluation in the values of our property, so there's that downside.
Okay, Bill, go for it. You've got ten minutes. All righty. Okay, and I'll, got it. I want to applaud the council for stepping forward in that way, you know. forward in that way. You know, Lincoln County, I think for well over 30 years, we've been doing general fund support to social service nonprofits. And in the current budget year, that's up to $175,000. Not all of it goes for homelessness. But I think a significant share of it does go to homeless families, people in crisis, supporting, for example, my sister's place. Samaritan House, though it's based in Newport, serves countywide in a typical year, about one-fifth of the families that come into Samaritan House have a north county address. Supporting the network of food banks around the county. So, yeah, we are trying to do what we can to help meet those immediate needs as well. But it is a challenge. And, you know, City of Portland, they did a series in the Oregonian a couple of years ago, which didn't surprise me. But they said, look, between Multnomah County, City of Portland, in the previous 10 years, they had spent something like $850 million supporting shelters and emergency services to homeless individuals and families. So why was the problem as bad as ever? And the bottom-line conclusion, you know, there was a lot of detail, but bottom line was, not enough long-term affordable housing. So people get into emergent, crisis shelters, transitional housing. If there's nowhere for them to go when they're done with their transitional housing, the cycle repeats itself. You know, Lincoln County situation, for all that a lot of people have been trying to do for a long time. When I started working on this 12 years ago, you know, we had 400 students countywide who met the federal definition of homelessness. Now it's more than 400 in north county alone, 1,000 countywide. Statewide percentage of homeless students is about 4%. Lincoln County, about 14%. So I think, you know, it's tough. It's, we've got to do the emergency, short-term crisis help. But long-term, until the housing supply increases by whatever public or private means, it's going to be a problem. And when you've got an economy that is so much based on seasonal and part-time jobs and retirement, you know, that's one thing that Commissioner Thompson will always hit me with. And I say, he's absolutely right. Until we have more good-paying jobs here, and I think we've all worked to try and help that, you know, it's always going to be a challenge.
I might highlight a couple of programs. Commissioner Hall, if you mentioned them, I apologize. I think you mentioned the Samaritan House, but did you mention Family Promise, which is a Lincoln City program? I mean, both of those, I think, are very effective in giving families an opportunity to get on their feet, establish some savings. And then that enables them to, if they can find housing, at least, afford housing and stabilize the families. So those are a couple of programs that the county has supported, and I think they're very effective.
May I mention the property we're holding back that could be used?
Well, I do know, and, you know, this is a topic, as I think somebody mentioned earlier in the meeting, the city managers all meet, we try to meet once a month. In fact, we were supposed to have a meeting recently, but most of the managers were at a conference. And I participate on behalf of the county. And I can tell you that that is, that all the range of housing issues are on the forefront of our discussions at every single one of these meetings. We talk about what each of the communities are trying to do to address all these various issues. And I would note that, and one of the things that, to kind of segue into what Commissioner Thompson was saying, is that the county's been looking at its inventory of where we do have properties to see if we can bring some tax-foreclosed properties, for instance, to the front to actually utilize for possible housing opportunities. And we've got some properties, although unfortunately, most of the properties we get are not the greatest properties. Lots of times they're unbuildable for whatever reason, those kinds of things. But we are trying to see what's in our inventory. But I wanted to say, just to kind of add to this, and maybe close at least from my end, that one of the things we'd hope to do is, we did have a summit, it's probably been at least a year, when we brought elected officials, managers, other staff to the city of Newport, and talked about the various things we're doing in each city, in each community, to see things that we might share, the techniques, the problems, you know, what are the things we can do on a more regional basis in the entire county, as well as for our individual communities. And I think that there's a talk now about doing that again, coming up in the not-too-distant future, I want to say, either late summer or early fall, and get together. Newport, I know, has been doing some very specific things. They've been considering some, for instance, some property tax exemptions around multifamily housing. They're going to come and do a presentation to us next week about our role in doing that. We've actually done a couple of projects, one of them here in Lincoln City, that involves incentives to get some additional multifamily housing. So this might be a great opportunity to kind of segue all this information in with what other communities are doing, and see where we're achieving things and where we need to improve.
Mr. Chair? Stick my nose in where it doesn't belong. Kelly, and I don't remember Kelly's last name, owns the Jonas Whale. She's been talking with you two about possibly moving. And I just wanted to encourage the county to help her with her move. She's another one of those people like Martha Watts at Shiloh the Gathering that is boots on the ground.
Oh, yeah.
Very passionate about the work. And doesn't shy away from that population and reaching out a hand at people who sometimes you don't want to be near. And so, a big supporter of Kelly.
Yeah.
One thing that I will point out with, from my perspective, Family Promise and Shiloh the Gathering succeed, and Jonas Whale as well, is there's a huge level of accountability to these programs. It's not simply, here's some money, here's, you must meet these qualifications, you must put some effort into this. And that's what I would support in anything we go forward with that there is. And I had a question. I don't know if it's appropriate for this gathering, but I'll just throw it out there. Construction trades programs in the high schools. I've talked to several builders who say they couldn't hire them. Kids fast enough that knew how to frame a building, you know, or hang some drywall. And I'm wondering if there's a way to reinvigorate that program. Where I grew up in East Portland, every year the school would build a house. And it was from donated land, and then it was sold to a low-income family. And I don't know if there's a way to resurrect that, or if there's a program like that in existence now.
I don't think there is now, but I know just from the discussions I've heard in Salem, there's, is, I think, growing advocacy for technical and trade education. That's unfortunately, one of the things that is, I think, really gone by the wayside in Oregon in the last 20, 30 years. Because, you know, it is expensive, but I think it's a worthwhile investment. Talk about, again, a way to help create good-paying, steady jobs. And, you know, this is one thing when people, and I go on longer than Commissioner Thompson will let me, about, well, why aren't we seeing more houses built faster? But there's so many pieces to it, that I've talked to a lot of people in the industry, and they say, you know, when the housing market tanked now, almost 10 years ago, a lot of contractors, a lot of employees got out of the business. And even though it's picking up again, the, you know, the workforce has not come back to the extent that they need. So, you know, they say if you've got a contractor as a choice between maybe doing a 20-unit project in Lincoln City and an 80-unit project in Salem, they're going to take on the 80-unit project in Salem, just because, you know, they're going to make more money. And you can't ever fault a businessperson for looking to maximize their return. But I think you've identified a real challenge there. And if I could respond briefly also on your point about accountability, like 10 years ago, and I wish the state would look at doing this again, they created a pot of money where we could get what's called permanent supportive housing. It's basically, it's like transitional housing. We repurposed an existing apartment building, actually, Community Services Consortium. But it also, the big difference is, there's no time limit on occupancy. There's case management that goes with it, connection to other services. And again, when people come in, the whole condition is, you have to work for the highest level of self-sufficiency possible. So like, I know, some older folks who have gone in there with multiple physical and mental health challenges, they pay 30% of their disability check. And, you know, frankly, that's going to be probably their home for the rest of their life. In other cases, I mean, Commissioner Thompson, I think you were there when we held the ribbon-cutting on that. It was a young, single mother with her two teenage kids. And she was thrilled that they were going to be able to go in there, that they were going to have a computer, her kids were going to have their own computer to do homework, because they had a place of their own. And she was going to take online community college courses. And I think, you know, they were there a year or two, and then they, you know, got on their feet and were able to move out. So, yeah, I think every program that I always try to support is based on people contributing to the best of their ability, giving something back. And I think that's a good...
We're just about seven o'clock, and I wanted to touch on one thing. I worked on education reform, you know, it was in the legislature. And when you move to higher standards of education, then you're asking to evaluate your entire student body. So one of the consequences is that things like shop and those kinds of programs don't get tested in the abilities. It's the academic abilities that get tested. So it becomes a higher priority in the education system when you create that kind of standard. Physical education goes away. Even though we can train the smartest kids in the world, but if they die young, it's, I never could understand exactly why that was cut out. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in the...
Music building programs.
Music, those kinds of things. That's one of the problems when you create these higher academic standards. You wind up losing a bunch of the things that really are very valuable to people, so.
Commissioner, I believe the counselor has a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Before you leave, would you ever consider the possibility of the county keeping an eye open for nonprofit contractor development? We see a lot of for-profit that builds homes. But there must be some partnerships out there that would consider, like Northwest Coast Housing. I mean, they refer each and they take over. But something that would build it from the ground up.
Oh, yeah. Well, like, just a couple of quick examples on that. Northwest Coastal Housing, Samaritan House is partnering with them. And actually, we're trying to put together a plan to build like, I think it's a 12 or 13-unit project in Newport. If we can get the financing pulled together for that, that would be a permanent low-income apartment building. I have talked to Community Development Corporation, Northwest, yeah, Northwest Coastal Housing. I've, you know, they've been kind of in a maintenance mode for a long time, but I think they're interested in...
Send them our way, because we have land.
Yeah, they're interested in doing some projects now. Habitat has been doing steadily. You know, it's two or three homes a year. And some people say that's only two or three homes. But think of that's two or three families that have a place they can call their own thanks to that opportunity. So, yeah, that's something. And then, of course, the Land Trust. And we, you know, I mentioned earlier, the legislature funding the bonding for homeownership. And so the Land Trust, we're really hoping we can get some homes going in the county with that money.
Your 10 minutes is up.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else. Okay. Well, during this meeting, come back for the regular commission meeting following this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
Thanks for hosting us.
For us, yeah. All right.
I don't think that I have anything to add.
Keep pushing. Even next year's immediate past president, I'll be a has-been, but I'll still be in there fighting for us.
Oh, hey, one thing I should have mentioned, Arnett.
That's a natural to do it, because they have a lot of resources and things.
But I don't...
You get him to do a nonprofit stuff, you've got to be careful where your contract is. If he puts a crew under something, there's a days or four.
Put your crew in, have a tendency, you have any situations.
I've booked a half an hour.
Lots of it.